...budget hearing to order at 5:03 PM on June 16, 2025 at the Administration Building. Approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to...
Don't...
I'm sorry, roll call. I'm sorry. Roll call.
Beaton?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Fortress?
Present.
Fox?
Here.
Leframboys?
Here.
Rete?
Here.
Hinton?
Here.
Now approval of the agenda, please.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Support.
Motion and supported to approve the agenda, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Leframboys?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Next is public comment. This is a business meeting of Board of Education held in public, but not a public community meeting. The Board has two opportunities to be... For the public to address the Board respectfully. I see no one approaching the podium, so we'll move on to new business, truth and taxation.
Are you ready? Okay, great. So I wanted to start off this before I turn it over to Monica and Crystal to say, first of all, I just want to say what a great job that they've done in a short period of time of having to turn around the current budget with things coming in and out. The inability to get into our former business managers' files until just a couple of weeks ago. That was held from them, so they didn't have any of the backup and the history. And then I also want to say that the 2526 budget that you will get tonight is far from what it should be, given the fact that we don't know what state aid is, we don't know what our students are, and we have not had the time to go through zero-based practices. It was just a rollover. So I want to say that in public over and over and over again. It is just a estimation of a starting point of where we need to be. And the team, the central office team, has worked very hard to start eliminating positions as we can in combining roles in order to save the district. And we'll talk a little bit about where those are. And, but just kudos, great job. And please think about some of those questions that you might have. But do know that even the 2425 end budget may have some changes in the next couple of weeks. And then the 2526 will have great changes. And we've got some plans that we will share with you that we're going to do along the way so that we keep the Board updated on an ongoing basis. So without further ado.
Thank you. And good evening. Oh, here's Crystal. I'll give her a little reprieve so she can catch her breath coming in.
All right.
Oh, Crystal, you can give those to Jamie because I don't think we need those until the next meeting. Okay. Okay. So our first slide, and I guess, let's see, right here. Going through, looking at the 2425 budget for revenues. We went through and we reviewed state aid and grant allocations. And we went through line by line and making sure we could account for any final adjustments that are known. I think every time state aid is like evened out, the next month, something's very different. So based on what we knew as of the May state aid, that's what the budget reflects. We reviewed center program budgets and updated the inter-fund transfers as they're allowed. We are able to transfer for rent and indirect costs. So that was reflected on the general fund and center program budget. And then we reviewed other miscellaneous revenue items. Just if anything else was out of line and looking at where everything was at as far as revenue.
Okay, so with the expense, so what we did is we reviewed all the employees' positions in the district. And then we took the actual incurred costs today and added in the projected remaining costs, including the fringes. So we essentially did a forecast with the employees and what they're expected to earn until the end of the school year or at the end of their contract period. We also reviewed the current expenses and projections through the end of the year, taking into account any known accruals that would need to be accounted for in addition.
The net of the changes that we made left us with a $1.326 million deficit within the year. Now again, for... Right. Okay. So the $1.3 million that we saw decrease, we see $1.1 million was in 51(c) special ed, state aid revenue. We found out in late May that we were deducted $511,000 on GSRP. And we have already talked about ways that we can know that that change would be coming well in advance of getting hit with that. So we will be ahead of that change next year. 31(a) state aid revenues, we did a true-up to that, and that was a deduction of $388,000. We, although we did just receive a delinquent property tax check, we still, our delinquent taxes have increased. So we saw a reduction in the budget for $240,000 for that. And the center program, they had some excess fund balance. And with the adjustment of the indirect transfers and rent, general fund actually saw a pickup of $385,000. And then we have some invest in MCA expense offsets. So when we give them the revenue that they have for their pupil allowance, we will deduct the cash that we give them for what they owe us back for. So that was a pickup of $528,000 in revenue. So if we go to this slide, it'll show our original budget for 2425. We projected we would have a deficit of 500, just about $530,000 with an ending fund balance of $463,000. Our last amendment, we thought that we would be $440,000 favorable. And with our existing fund balance, we would have been left with $1.4 million. Unfortunately, the changes we just talked about on the previous slide, those totaled $1.76 million. So we are looking right now at a deficit of $1.3 million for this year for our operating. I highly doubt it will come in anywhere near that as we, you know, wrap up grants and hopefully there's additional revenue that we'll be able to recognize. And there are some things where we'll see extra funding, you know, a fifth payment for PA-18 or other sources where we think that will come in a little bit better. But right now, as it's budgeted, we would have for the 25-year a deficit fund balance of $333,000. Okay, Crystal?
In regards to the other revenue fund budgets, food service, childcare, and special education, as you'll see, first off, this is... This is not all-inclusive because as of what Monica said, you know, we still have funds that will come in even later until the end of the school year, whether July, August, that we still need to account for. And all that will be reflected on the audit. So this is just, again, while I'm going through this, is the preliminary to the final budget. So with the food service, we are seeing a negative balance of $75,000. This also includes the, from the cafeteria remodel that we did, that ate up some of it. So what we're doing as we're going through our books and quote now year and we're seeing where we can actually adjust some of those costs and maybe have the seeking fund pick up some of that. And then the childcare fund, again, we kind of expect that the expenses will be a little bit over, but we do have a little bit of a fund balance that can cover. And then with our center fund, we have the $2.1 million. But again, we're waiting on, as Monica said, some tuition payments that are coming in in addition to some PA-18s, so $1.3 million, PA-18, about $200,000 in addition to anything else that could be pending. PA-18s can possibly sometimes give you an extra payment as well that we're waiting on to see exactly what that is.
I'm going to just add to that. We know for sure we won't be seeing a $2.1 million deficit in the center fund. There were a couple of things that came into play. The expenses were over-budgeted and also included a lot of vacant positions. We have to keep the budget in our system at what the final approved budget was. So this budget number represents a lot of vacant positions, expenses that won't happen. And there was one calculation error in the workbook that overstated the cost for paras. So this looks much worse than what the reality will be. But just because we have to leave the budget as it is, and there was a revenue adjustment in there. So the expenses are overstated, but the revenue saw the adjustment. I guess I'll keep it, the next one's me.
I have a quick question, sorry.
Sure.
So this general fund budget does not include the other revenue fund budgets? It's a whole separate deal?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so for 26, just a few highlights of what we included or what the assumptions were in the budget. Again, I want to emphasize that this is not a zero-based budget, which would be ideal. And that's what we're going to actually work toward over the summer to get to a better place. Historically, I think the budgets have been rolled and perhaps inflation factor or percentage has been put onto it. I want to start at zero and put in what we know we need so that we're not continually rolling additional costs that we don't really know are in the budget. So that's where we will get to, but currently what you're seeing is just a roll-forward budget. And then we did make a couple of assumptions and some changes as we knew. So for the assumptions, we projected a $350 per pupil foundation increase, which totaled $2.25 million. Of that, $1.7 would go to general fund and the $540 would go to the center program. We projected federal and state funding outside of the per pupil amount to be flat and for enrollment to be flat. And on that, I should say, you know, we paid and we had to earlier in the year for enrollment projections because we had to do that for our early warning monitoring reporting. I did not have access to, I think Dr. Croupy has a great historical file that they use for enrollment trending and projections. So now that she's back and we have the file, that showed the exact same results as what the enrollment reporting did. So I think the good part on that is that we do have good numbers we're using here. We were conservative with our estimates and adjustments. So we know that there's some things will be more favorable, but we don't want to make it look potentially better than it would be. So err on the side of caution and we're conservative with things. We did make changes for some of the pieces that we knew would be occurring. $918,000 increase in expense for staffing steps. This was teachers and paras, custodial maintenance, any union that had a settled contract. It does not include administrative, non-union, or secretaries. And we didn't step each person individually, we just represented it as a 3% increase. We removed the grant carryover and prior year state aid revenue. So that was about $2.4 million that came out of the budget. And then again, the $1.7 million increase from the state aid foundation.
So were you using the $10,000 number?
Yes, it's just below $10,000. It'd be 9608, and then we added 350.
What was the enrollment count that you used?
I used...
Flat.
Yeah, so it was the 2900. I don't have the exact number, but it was from our May state aid report.
Was that the report that you sent us this weekend?
Oh, no, that report was the enrollment study that was done that says use flat. So she used the actual number on the state aid count. So we get a state aid note every month and the numbers will be up there that you should use. So it's flat, it's what was used last year too.
It's a little less than $3,000, it's not too short.
29.
What is it, 29 what?
I believe it's 2992, but don't quote me on that, but it's only a little less than $3,000.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
So for reductions or, I like to think of efficiencies that we've already talked about or are in the process of putting in place. And they say in the process because I believe at least one of the things will be voted on tonight. So we know though our interest expense for borrowing will be lower next year. So we've reduced that by $220,000. We have reduced audit fees by $60,000. We should not be paying more than $75,000 this year, so almost in half. We reduced attorney fees by $56,000. And professional development, which I believe Stephanie, was this through ARC? Okay. That was reduced $75,000. We removed costs for interim staff, which would be Matt Miller's support and the interim superintendent. We removed costs for Patel for Kids, which is our Portrait of a Learner. And that's, we will have paid for everything by the end of this year, is that right?
Sorry.
Yeah, okay. UKRU trainer reduction, that was a $10,000 savings. Power Schools expense reduction. So we no longer have any of the startup or implementation costs. It's just our annual service fee, so that went down, that expense went down $32,000. And then we have, this is more of the list, $692,000 in staffing changes. We reduced the number of varsity assistant coaches by $10,000, that was a $10,000 reduction.
So what did we do? Can you talk a little bit more in detail on what you're doing? Like on the attorney fees, how did we reduce them? What are we, what's the plan?
Well, the plan is we won't have two investigations next year. So, no, it's just, we know that we're seeing higher attorney fees this year than what we normally would. So we brought it back down more to what our normal levels would be.
So these are not adjustments in costs? These are costs that we know, that we had this year that we know we will not have in 2026?
So with all of those up there, what we did is talk as a team specifically about that. So the cost of having Matt Miller and an interim superintendent was 160 grand. The cost of the attorney fees outside of what we utilized to run the business was $56,000. So this period of time from January on was $56,000. That's how we kind of looked at this. And then, so that's how we talked about it as a team. What are some things that were in the last year's budget that caused increases that we wouldn't have to do, or we hope we don't have to do next year? Of course, if we do, then that's where we are. We know we already paid for Portrait of a Learner. We know that while we would love to have some of that professional development, we've been doing it for several years, so we feel like we can utilize our coaches to facilitate that. UKRU, we talked about that at the last meeting, we had many coaches, we're going down to two coaches. So this is just, if you remember, our first run. And then on the 21st, we will bring to you more suggestions that are aligned with things such as, we're not filling third classrooms till we get student enrollment in, right? So we're holding really tight. And even though the principals want to do it before they leave, we're like, nope, you can't fill that third, fifth grade until we get closer to that. We know through scheduling at the junior high, there's a potential reduction of another PE coach. We know that at the high school, Tammy shared there's two positions that she believes that she can reduce, but she's finishing up those schedules and will get back to us. It's all somewhat natural attrition. There isn't letting go of any teachers, and I think that's important to say. You know, what we're trying to do is pull reductions way up high or something that's happening naturally. So for example, we know that there's a teacher potentially leaving at the high school. Tammy's already pulled that in to remove that class from the schedule and able to move the kids around and do that. And we know that we have some substitutes that we might come back in, that we pay substitute cost and also health insurance. We may choose to not do that anymore and bring that to you on the 21st. Then we'll ask you with some more ideas, and then on the 22nd, we'll bring it back. So we've developed a list to see how close we get to go to. And we also will hope at that point in time also that the state will have given us what our funding is, and then we can at least project a little closer. Because I think the number we're using is the lowest, even lower than the $10,000 mark, which should leave us some wiggle room as well. As the meeting I was at on Monday felt like $10,000 was going to be like the baseline that was going to happen. And that 31(a) and that special ed cost would probably remain the same in the midst of this battling out. But we'll know more as we come in. I hope that was helpful.
And now we have no surprises on the upcoming slides. No. Thank you, that was helpful. So the last piece, we were looking at, says reduce or eliminate open positions. We reduced the K-12 supervisor, and she's going to be moved to the middle school as principal. The assistant superintendent secretary, we've eliminated. Two office paras, PE teacher, secondary instructional coach. And I believe that's one where there was a retirement. So we've restructured another coach to cover the high school and middle school. Advantage elementary position was eliminated. And I think that was no longer needed and moved to a different school? Okay. And then VVA at the high school to change to a para position.
Those are all salaries without benefits, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So there's more wiggle room?
Right. So that 692 is strictly paid, not...
Yes.
...enter anything on?
Correct.
I have another quick question. We eliminated that advantage position because it wasn't needed. Do we have a different, did we only have one advantage elementary classroom?
So we started the year with two and a para, and that teacher took medical leave. And so the kids were moved into one classroom, and the para was then not filled there. They moved to another position. So for part of the year, we had one classroom. Those students were transitioned back to the school, and that person went to the junior high and supported the girls' junior high. That will be reduced this year, so...
So we'll have none?
We'll have none at the elementary, yes. And that's how it functioned for half a year from January on.
Any other questions on that?
If you take the salary, would you, so you get the full thinking about how much we're saving, would you add 30% to that? 55%? Thank you.
And we chose not to do that, but bring that to you in July when we come through. Because our hope is, is that we'll be able to go back and start rebuilding our schools by function, right? And by that area so that we can see exactly the costs and the benefits at that point in time.
Thank you.
This slide shows the state aid per student summary. And maybe what I should add for the future is the actual amount, because we can see it on the graph. But so 9958 is where we're projecting we would be for '26. And '24 and '25 are both flat at 9608. And this just shows our enrollment trends, so we're showing the same enrollment for '26 as '25. Sorry, Crystal, I'm hogging all the slides. So for '26, our initial budget, we're projecting $59 million in revenues, $61 million in expenditures for a deficit of $1.7 million. Now again, this is the '25 budget we rolled and just made those minimal changes. So we will have a better number going forward. But as of these numbers, we would be showing a deficit of $2 million at the end of next year.
So in order to be off the state list, what does it have? I mean, it has to be a five, but... It has to be a five.
So actually, let me answer part of that without the answer. So I've asked Monica to go back and talk to Treasury because I don't believe that you are on a deficit elimination list until it's several years. So you will still have to check in and be on the watch list, but there's a threshold, I believe in the back of my head, that's not what we had time for today, to make sure we had everything ready for you, of three years. We don't project a $2 million deficit. We have several positions that we already know that are in our head, that we're watching very carefully. We've gone through that as a team at the building level based upon enrollment. So if the enrollment doesn't come in, right, those go down. We might raise class sizes just a little bit, but not too much. We don't want it to be out of hand. But we also don't want to get class sizes of 14 and 15 at the elementary school if you don't have three. So we're watching that on a regular basis. And so we'll bring that stuff to you after we know what those numbers are. I want to remind you, in the last several years, one, we projected one thing and it came in another. Sometimes not the way we wanted it, but usually it's a little more or a little less. We believe we're extremely conservative on that. And we've made some changes immediately for next year that'll help facilitate. And we are holding changes as they come. And I want to again say on this film, we are not firing teachers. We are not letting teachers, paraprofessionals going. We believe there'll be a natural attrition and some areas that I think everybody learned that you got to watch out along the way because like the ISD didn't give you the early childhood numbers until May. Well, what are you going to do about it then? So you have to put in your calendar in December to look and see what your numbers are and make a projection about what that's going to be, and then make changes from there. So, you know, there...
So, you know, there, I believe, I'm going in my heart of that we're going to be at zero for the beginning fund balance for this year, and then we'll be able to share through some collaborative conversations about you as a board, what are some things that you're thinking about, here's what we're thinking about, and work through that in July. We would love for that to happen in February and March of a following year, but it isn't, and so this is where we are, and we believe we're, we're making good moves to direct that in a positive direction.
And this is just showing a history of our general fund revenue and expenditures. So since '23, our, after that actually, our revenue has been lower than our expenditures. So this has been trending in this direction, and there's not really much else on there.
Okay, so in regards to the, um, budgets, special fund budgets, for the '25, '26, again, I know that we've repeated it over and over again, but this is just a rolling budget from what we projected for '24, '25. So again, these aren't necessarily hard numbers, and as we go along, as Dr. Crouppie said, you know, in April, or, sorry, July, and even then on when we have our budget meetings and then amendments, you'll have more accurate numbers, and then see what we can do to adjust things. But again, the food service fund, from the rollover projections, we're expecting a negative balance with 267,000. With the childcare, we're still in the positive, it just, the 83 just dipped into what we already had as far as the previous fund balance. And especially the center fund, again, rollover balances, we're still expecting, you know, other revenues to come in, and again, none of that will necessarily reflect until the audit is complete. So essentially, again, it's just a rollover budget.
Can, can I ask, we didn't get a chance to see this earlier as they were just finishing these fund balances, did we withdraw from the food service the construction costs out of that?
That's still reflected.
Okay, so I want to make sure that, that, that will be a significant change, because we don't have any construction going on this summer for the food service.
Actually, I'm sorry, it was taken out of the expense budget.
Okay.
So it's not reflected there, but it is still reflected in the deficit beginning balance.
Okay.
And that will change once we dispose that out.
So I have another question. Pretend these numbers are real, just pretend. So for the $75,000, which was the end of last year, or the end of this year, sorry, and the 267, which would be next year's, how does that get covered?
You'll have to take it out of the general fund, you know, but we've never had that in my 10 years that I've been here, and we haven't been able to dig into that number, and so that's what I'm suspect of, that number.
So the same, the special education, that would be, have to be transferred out of the general fund to cover those expenses?
We have to have 7% in that account, and so we'd have to have at least 7%, but again, they're giving you actually where they are, we are not at 2.1 million, they just, they can't change a yes.
I understand that.
Yes, if they were real, we would.
If that happens, it'd have to come out of the general fund, so that is not reflected necessarily in this general fund budget, because we're anticipating those numbers are not going to change.
Correct.
I mean, are going to change them.
Correct.
Okay.
And I believe what you've seen in the special education fund before is that they would manually change that budget, and that's what they would put up there and not put actually where we are right now, right? They would show you, because they've been doing it for a long time, they would put it in there and make it look differently than what it actually is at this moment.
Okay, so for our next steps, we'll work throughout the summer to get actual enrollment, and like we've said, that will determine some of our class size, or if we need to add some teachers. We're waiting for the state budget adoption, that could be in the next few weeks or few months, we don't know. The big focus and what will really help us though is, is closing out the books and preparing for the audit, and that will help us to know where we're, where we'll be sitting. And then the business office and board collaboration for budget changes, July 21st and 22nd. We will bring budget updates to the board in August and October. I don't think we'll have full information in August to bring you a full budget amendment, but we will update you fully on, and everything that's known at the time and how that changes where we're at with the budget. And then we'll do our first budget amendment in December, we'll know state aid and grant funding where we're at by then. We will continue to monitor grant expenditures, and we are going to go through line by line and review the budget, back to our zero-based budgeting, and see where we can make some changes.
Can we talk a little bit what it looks like to have budget updates versus an amendment, so we can be real clear how accurate that really is? Does, do you understand what I'm asking?
But the difference?
Yeah.
So we will bring you the same level of information, but it'll be a matter of, this is what's known and still are unknowns, and the impact it'll have on the budget, but we won't have a resolution at that time to adopt where we're at, because there'll still be quite a few unknowns at that point. So we'll give you all of the information as, as if you were adopting the budget, you know, for updates, but we're not going to have a resolution for that.
And the unknown, just to clarify a little bit, can be anything from state aid changes that we can account for, position, additional position vacancies that we potentially, you know, won't be filling, or, you know, bringing teachers in, not teachers, I'm sorry, but others, and at a different rate or whatnot. So that's what she means in regards to that, or what we mean. And in addition to that, so we will be looking closely at the positions for reassignment of duties, any opportunities that we can get. So for instance, the administrative assistant to the super, to the assistant superintendent, those duties, you know, are being split amongst Jamie, Dr. Crouppie, Monica, and then even, you know, Council Payable can pick up some of the, the extra work that was being done there. So, and it's going all across the board, but I'm just giving you that one example.
And I want to say, Seth, what's important to note is that when we are eliminating positions or combining, it doesn't mean we don't need that position, it's not necessarily in every case sustainable long-term, but it's what we think we need to do now to get us to a better place financially. I, I'm pretty sure I'll go out on a limb and say Chuck won't want to be communications and athletic director for 10 years, but I think that we're fortunate that he's willing to do that, so that we can get through and get to a positive fund balance.
And it's going to take a couple of years for us to get our feet back on the right track. And I, and if you're not aware, school districts around us in Oakland County have done significant staffing cuts to long-term teachers because of their concerns with the flow of the money coming in. And, and so we've been fortunate over the years to not have to do that, since before I came, that natural attrition kind of helped us walk through that, I think that will be the same now, we've had some retirements and such. But we all know that we've all taken on additional items, and as the, you know, funding has flowed, it's been much better for work-life balance, but we also need to remember what that does to our staff as far as burning them out. So we have to be careful along the way, but right now, it's what we have to do in order to successfully walk forward and, and make the cuts where it makes sense.
Just wanted to highlight that we are working with Treasury, they have a grant for reimbursement for expenses, and we've submitted probably about $500,000 worth, doesn't mean that that's what we're getting, it is in review, and we should have an update hopefully by early July. It is something that we've done in the past when we were in deficit and received about 100,000, so we're just hoping that with what we submitted, we'll get a little bit more, and that'll help offset, if, you know, not, if we break even to zero, it might even put us back into the, to the positive.
So it goes on the '24, '25, because it's reimbursement for things that we've already expended?
Okay, but what exactly is it? It's a grant that you filed through the Treasury Department to recoup because we're in deficit?
Yep. We used to get 100,000 each year for that, and they, they give you certain things, and it's not as well, I think the story was, right, it's not as well-known right now, so as more districts are going to go into deficit, you might not get that amount of money. When times get rough, this is what they do, and times are rough. And so we submitted every single thing that we could think about, we just kept brainstorming back and forth, what are things that we have this year that wasn't covered with a grant, and that wasn't put somewhere else, or, you know, and that's what, we came up with a lot of items that, that was submitted, and hopefully they're going to reimburse those.
What is the name of that grant?
It's not really a grant, they kind of referred to it as that, just called it reimbursement, they have called it a reimbursement grant. So they have a pot of money that they can use for this, this year, they said they're not guaranteed every year that they have that, and they expect a large influx of districts that would be eligible next year. So it's restricted on what we could apply for, we got creative, not knowing how much they'll have, and depending on how much other districts submitted for, we don't know how much of the.
So what can you apply for? What are the items?
There were some things with professional development, some things that, a project or an initiative that could bring financial savings to the district. So one of the things that we put through were, were the trauma-informed school training, that that goes hand in hand with our seclusion and restraint policy, and we will, we have seen really effectiveness from that financially and, you know, with our students and staff. So we put in costs for that, for training, for Ukuru, anything associated with that. Any, some of the board trainings that have not been reimbursed, some of the superintendent memberships or workshops, finance trainings or workshops. We put in for some software things, under the, you know, that will help us get more financially stable, even if we had a one-year offset for some of the costs. So we know we won't get it all, but we were creative and dug as deep as we could to get as much in front of them as, as we could.
The long story short is, they know that this is what's going to be happening ongoing if we don't fix our financial structure for education. And so while we're on the front end of this, there's a lot of districts that are coming right behind us. And so, you know, we're thankful that that was an offer, and we just sat down and looked at every dime that we could, thinking about what could qualify as things that are helping you become financially sound.
And that's reflected for this, this year. It kind of reminds me of the E-Rate program, that we replaced our phone system, went from AT&amp;T to, I mean, we, they gave us like $3 million one year for E-Rate, and we applied for switches and wireless, and that's how we were able to start upgrading our, our equipment and that. And then slowly, as you needed, you, they kind of like, just, you know, less and less and less, as you got things situated, you know. I remember that, one of the stories was Detroit schools, they would buy a server for every student, classroom student, so that way they could, you know, utilize that funding, but they got caught, because you can't have a server for every student. So, I mean, it's, it's a good thing, and I'm glad that the, the government is recognizing that.
I mean, I think a key here is, the sky is not falling. The sky is, is dreary, there's some fog that's coming up, but I believe working together, we will work this through, we've done this before. You know, it'll be a little tighter, we're going to look at some supplies and such, and maybe take away the Amazon ordering, so that we order a little more in bulk and look at the kind of savings that that does. So maybe we, that counts payable is also counts receivable, so that that person checking in everything and, you know, going through, so just really tightening up our processes even more so in our business office, but that, again, means people are going to be taking on extra work.
If anyone had any additional questions or?
Do you have questions, comments, anybody?
Before your questions, I just want to say, these ladies worked around the clock for the last two weeks, on the weekends, into 3:00 in the morning to bring things the next day, and so I just want to thank both of them. It's been a pleasure working with them and, and listening to our back and forth banter on, on different ideas, and I just, kudos to both of you, you were pretty, pretty amazing. So thank you.
Can I also say? Speaking on the Google sheet, is that why you said 3:00 in the morning?
I just heard you were up till 3:00 in the morning.
I seen, I seen you pop on there for a second.
Listen, it's been a concern for us, and that's why we just, again, want to say, okay, that's the number, don't buy that number, let's get our time in July and August working together to kind of see where we are and see where we're going. Then, you know, we can say, oh, boy, you know, like, we're going to have to make some deeper, deeper cuts. But I, I believe that it'll come together, it always does, and I think the bigger key is very positive leadership happening, very positive board leadership happening, seeing and showing our community what a great school district this is to be a part of, and the experience and the great outcomes that we've been able to provide over the last 10 years with doctors, nurses, you know, we've got great kids that are doing so many great things, the Promison has lifted that up, but we've got welders, we've got all kinds of great things coming out, and showing our community, things like early middle college that we're doing, that is available. And so lots of positive, that's what we have had to do to remind our community about how great Hazel Park is.
So I just want to say thank you to, a lot of hard work there, and we're very detailed, it was very informational, so thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We, we do have sandwiches in Jamie's office, if you wanted to pick a sandwich and chips and, you know.
Yeah. That'd be motion to adjourn, I, if somebody's second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Take a second to get those sandwiches.
Yeah, go get the, go get the sandwiches, chips.